Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our September the 12th, 2023 monthly meeting. Mr. Ramikas, would you do the pledge of allegiance for us? Mr. Manager, consent agenda.
Yes, sir. On the consent agenda this evening is a budget amendment for asphalt pavement replacement caused by natural gas system replacement, approval of FY24 budget adjustments, and acceptance of certified local government grant funds for architectural review board training program, resolution to recommend canceling transportation alternative program grant funds for Sperryville Pike sidewalk project treasures reports and minutes of previous meetings.
Motion to approve agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. 601 proclamation, Mr. Short.
Whereas September 17, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is of the greatest importance that all citizens understand the provisions and principles contained in the Constitution in order to effectively support, preserve, protect, and defend it against all enemies, and whereas the Constitution, together with the Bill of Rights, have provided the organic structure for our democratic republic and our individual liberties, enabling our nation to rise from a collection of ragtag former colonies to a united nation in which our people have created opportunity and built the greatest economy in the world based upon freedom, creative genius, and hard work, and whereas in recognition of the signing of the Constitution and of Americans who strive to fulfill the duties and responsibilities of citizenship, the Congress by joint resolution of February 29, 1952, 36 USC 106 is amended, designated September 17 as Constitution Day and Citizenship Day, and by resolution of August 2, 1956, 36 USC 108 is amended, requested that the President proclaim the week beginning September 17 and ending September 23 of each year as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I Frank Reeves, Jr., Mayor of the Town of Culpeper, Virginia, and on behalf of the Culpeper Town Council hereby proclaim September 17 through the 23rd, 2023, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to affirm the ideals of the Constitution of the United States of America and the Bill of Rights by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed through this magnificent document, remembering that lost rights may never be regained, and to express gratitude for the privilege of American citizenship, given under my hand this 12th day of September, 2023, Frank Reeves, Mayor, on behalf of the Town Council of Culpeper, Virginia.
All right. 701, public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for town citizens, businesses, and group to speak or to bring to our attention any town government-related issues. Please state your name and place of residence for record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Groups are requested to have a spokesperson. If you are here for the rezoning, please hold your comments until the public can a little later. Is there anyone who would like to speak this time? All right, now what? Go to 801, Megan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move the council appoint James Clements to the Planning Commission for a four-year term beginning immediately and expiring on August 31, 2027.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. 901A, public can on rezoning of Parsha to Industrial District M2, Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'll try and give a brief overview of the rezoning application, and I know the applicant has a presentation as well at the start of the public hearing. So this is a rezoning, rezoning 3957-2023. It's for two parcels, 41103 and 41104 that are currently zoned R2 off of East Chandler Street. Want to start by identifying what is currently approved on the property. As I said, they are R2. They went through a rezoning in the mid 2000s, and what is approved is a 490-unit residential subdivision, age-restricted development. The buildings there with the R2 standards that are in place are permitted to be up to 42 feet height. As part of this case, they did include a buffer against National Cemetery of 10 feet, and there are two access points for this particular development, both off of East Chandler Street, so all traffic would be routed to East Chandler Street. What is being proposed in the rezoning is to rezone it to M2 industrial in the town. It's proposed to be six buildings used for data center use, a total square footage of what's shown on here is a little over 1.7 million square feet. With the proffers, they would be permitted to go as high as 2.2 million square feet. The two buildings that are closest to East Chandler Street are limited in height to 45 feet. The other four buildings would be limited in height to 65 feet. What is committed to is a 100-foot vegetated buffer from the National Cemetery. This would be both evergreens and seasonal plantings as well. And the primary access to the property is off of McDevitt Drive with an emergency access and access to the electrical substation, proposed electrical substation off of East Chandler Street. So here's the entirety of the conceptual development plan that has been proffered with this application. So not proffered, but shown on the layout, and so given a pretty good indication of the distances. The shortest distance between one of the buildings, which is Building 6, one of those closest to East Chandler Street, and the nearest residential house is approximately 450 feet. The shortest distance between a building, which is Building 1, one of those rear buildings, and the closest property line with the National Cemetery is approximately 475 feet. And the shortest distance between a building and an actual burial plot at the National Cemetery is approximately 900 feet. Looking at the zoning in the vicinity of these two properties, as you can see, the two properties themselves are in yellow. That's a residential, the R2 zoning district. The purple around them is industrial. The dark purple to the south is the M2, is a rezoning that took place earlier this year, and there's the M1 zoning that currently exists to the west and to the north of this particular property. I will note that the purple property across this from East Chandler Street does have residential approvals on it, but it does have an industrial zoning, and those residential approvals will expire July 1 of 2025 if they're not developed. So looking at the proposal in the context of the town's comprehensive plan, we first looked at it against the character areas that are identified within the plan. This is specifically calling for mixed-use business, and it's looking to discourage single building developments. It envisions walkable village or town centers and walkable blocks. Clearly, this proposal does not represent that, but it does also mention that it wishes to identify new ways for the town to support development or just support new development. A more appropriate character area here would have been the institutional one. You can see that in blue on the map, however... Sorry, technical difficulties there. So the blue ones on the map are the institutional land use category. At that time, at the time the comprehensive plan adoption, there were no new ones envisioned, and so what you can see on there is that it's our existing religious institutions and school properties that were identified, but that would be for large land areas for industrial complexes, and it talks about providing necessary buffering or transitions for these particular properties. Looking at the other sections of the comprehensive plan, particularly the future land use map and the future land use chapter, this area is identified for employment center, which specifically calls for the utilization of existing available high-tech infrastructure in the town for highest and best uses. It includes industrial development, and specifically it calls out M2 as an appropriate zoning district within this land use category. Growth Area 3, which is the area that this particular property falls in, is identified for industrial and business development. It does include language that talks about a consideration of a mix of employment and residential uses. This may have been residual language based on the prior residential zoning categorization that was here. For the economic development section of the comprehensive plan, it does talk about working to enhance the marketability of sites in the town for economic development opportunities, and specifically to offer incentives to attract new development, and we'll touch on this in a moment. Two other components of the plan are the transportation and public facilities and natural resources chapters. The transportation section had identified proposed minor collector roads. These were unlikely to be constructed, in all honesty, due to the costs associated with crossing the railroad tracks there, the topography on the adjoining parcel, and then with the prior rezoning and the conceptual development plan that was associated with that, it would prohibit the connection or ultimate construction of these roads. From a natural resources perspective, this proposal does look to protect existing potential wetlands on the site, and it does have over 50% of the parcel actually preserved as open space, and they're also proposing contributions to the town in the form of cash contributions for the protection of open space and impervious surfaces. As I mentioned briefly, the economic development chapter spoke about utilizing incentives to encourage industrial and technological developments within the town. In December of last year, the town did adopt the technology zone, which offers incentive grants related to real estate taxes, machinery and tools taxes, the waiver of site plan review permits, fees, as well as incentives related to the business personal property. As you can see, these two parcels were specifically included within that technology zone. The applicant has provided a significant number of proffers related to this application, and I'll try and go through those fairly quickly. They have proffered general conformance with that conceptual zoning development plan that was illustrated, the cap of 2.2 million square feet. They've proffered and committed to setbacks in excess of the M2 zoning requirements, to a height limitation of 45 feet for the buildings closest to East Chandler Street, to 65 feet for all other buildings. These are both lower than the 70 feet that is permitted within the M2 district. They have committed to architectural design features on the buildings themselves, to the screening of rooftop mechanical equipment from East Chandler Street and the National Cemetery, and both including in that a height limitation on that screening as well as a setback from the building line. They have committed to prohibition on certain fence types for security fencing. They've committed to enhanced vegetated buffering and landscaping, including utilization of a variety of evergreen trees along East Chandler Street, the National Cemetery, and the Norfolk Southern Railway Line. They've committed to enhancing that 100-foot vegetated buffer that they'll have adjacent to the National Cemetery with a diversity of plants to provide seasonal color. They've committed the installation of the perimeter vegetated buffers along both East Chandler Street and the National Cemetery in the very first phase of the project to try and give them the best opportunity to reach maturation before the construction of those later buildings. They've committed to provide a noise study with the first site plan to demonstrate the appropriateness of the mitigation measures proposed, and this is a very important point. The applicant and the town don't have the necessary information available at this time in terms of the final design, the final engineering, the final knowledge of the technology to be utilized in these facilities to provide an accurate noise study at this time. So by proffering it at the first site plan, it allows those details and that information to be known and for an accurate assessment of it to be made at that time. Essentially, they will have to demonstrate how they are able to meet the standards in place with that study, which we will be having reviewed by an independent third party to ensure that it's accurately assessed, and before they're able to get that site plan approval and actually construct the buildings. They've also committed to noise standards equal to or in excess of surrounding localities. They've proposed a cash contribution of $50,000 for public trail improvements. They've proposed a cash contribution of 23 cents per square foot for Culpeper County volunteer fire and rescue. When you multiply that out over the 2.2 million square feet potentially constructed, that's a little over $500,000. They've proposed a cash contribution of $50,000 for the protection of trees and open spaces, a cash contribution of $100,000 to Germana Community College for scholarships for Culpeper County residents for IT-related training and education. And also subsequent to the planning commission, they have committed to, if requested by the National Cemetery, providing an access easement at no cost to the National Cemetery for the 90-foot strip of land that they have, that's part of their parcel that bisects the two National Cemetery properties, because they have purchased additional land for future expansion of the National Cemetery annex in that area, and so this would allow them to easily move their equipment and people across that land from the one side to the other. So in looking at this, the strengths of the proposal would certainly provide economic development opportunities and assist the town's tax base. There is comprehensive plan support from the future land use and economic development sections. The weakness is that it certainly does conflict with the mixed-use business character area designation within the comprehensive plan. The planning commission did ultimately hold two public hearings on this, and they voted at their August 15. Unfortunately, they were not able to provide a recommendation. They were deadlocked at a two-to-two vote with one of the members recusing themselves due to a potential conflict of interest. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have, and I do know that the applicant does have a presentation that they wish to provide at the start of the public hearing to provide some additional information.
I have a question. Well, point of clarification, just to make sure I'm understanding correctly. The way that it's currently zoned is for 490 houses 10 feet away from the cemetery.
Correct.
So if we don't rezone, that could happen because that's already zoned that way?
The applicant purchased this property with the intention of developing it under that residential plan. Shortly after they purchased it, the town declared the technology zone, which provided them with an indication that the town might like to see that developed in an alternate manner, and so they're exploring this opportunity.
So the rezoning, instead of 490 homes, the rezoning would mean six buildings 900 feet away?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Just had a question that I wanted to clarify. With the zoning to M2, this is conditional on data centers being built. If this were to fall through after approval, would that M2 zoning still carry on for... I mean, with M2, you have heavy industrial, you could end up with a foundry there. Is it locked in that if this falls through, it cannot be used for any other use M2-wise?
The applicant has not ruled out those other uses, but they have committed to that conceptual development zoning plan, so essentially it would need to be that layout of buildings and structures. They have in those proffers committed to those noise standards as well regardless of what the use may be. I would anticipate if they were not able to develop it as a data center, that they would come back for a zoning amendment if they wished to do something else within the M2, and that would be, again, a public hearing process before certainly the town council, but potentially the planning commission as well.
Anyone else?
I just had one question that you mentioned at the beginning. With the housing, the height limit on the housing, can you repeat that?
Certainly. The R2 zoning district has a height limit of three stories, and a story is defined as up to 14 feet in the town code, so essentially that serves as an effective height limit of 42 feet within the R2 zoning.
Okay. That's what I thought you said, and then the buildings for the data center would be 45 feet maximum closest to Chandler Street?
Correct. The two closest to East Chandler are capped at 45 feet for the structure themselves.
Good. All right, thank you. I'm going to open the floor for public can. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. I'm gonna let the advocates do his presentation before we start.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. For the record, my name is Stephen Plesko. I'm the development manager representing the Copperidge Data Center Campus Project. I'm a Culpeper resident, and I live in the Salem District. Appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you here tonight. Thank you, Andrew, for that very comprehensive presentation. I'd like to add some additional facts, and Andrew's presentation was very thorough, so if I skip a few slides, hopefully you won't mind, because he has covered it very, very well for us. So as Andrew indicated, we are in the town's technology zone, but we're also in a greater technology zone next to the county, so it's a much bigger area that is targeted and has been marketed and is intended for technology uses. This is the zoning map. Andrew did show us some of the adjacent properties. This is just a little bit bigger perspective, and pretty much everything that is east of the Norfolk Southern Railroad, which is highlighted in green, is or has been industrially zoned. This is an aerial view of our neighborhood. Our project is outlined there in red. You can see that we wrap the new section of the National Cemetery. It's not the original section, it's across the street. We wrap it on three sides, and Mountain Brook Estates is to our north. They're our only residential neighbor, and this area is not a stranger to data centers and technology uses. We have the Swift Data Center. Came in 1989. It's probably one of the most important financial data centers on the planet. The Equinix Data Center Campus is also a very important data center campus. It's a hub for many federal and government agencies, and it's a very critical portal that supports other data center uses in this area. There's already significant electrical infrastructure in this part of the town and the county. There's REC Substation next to the town wastewater treatment plant, and there is a Dominion Substation and a Town Power and Light Substation directly across the street from the National Cemetery and directly adjacent to the existing National Cemetery grounds. So in our work, we focused on our neighborhood context and what were our key site planning issues for the site. We had three priorities. Number one, respect the setting and slimmity of the U.S. National Cemetery. Number two, provide a suitable setback and buffering to Mountain Brook Estates. And number three, an issue that impacts both of our neighbors, is to address noise issues. Again, this is our site plan that Andrew's presented very thoroughly. The one thing I'd like to point out on this drawing is we have two electrical substations that are planned to the south of the new section of the National Cemetery. Part of the reason that we put those there is on the Peterson Project, which is to our south, their data center campus. That is where they're showing their electrical substations. So it's a cluster, it will be a cluster of four electrical substations potentially in that one area, and on our site plan, you can see on our southern property line, which is common to the Peterson property, we've left an open corridor, which we hope will be the route for incoming overhead electrical transmission lines. We cannot determine or specify or tell the electrical utilities today, this is where we want the power to come in. That's their choice, and they have to do their engineering to determine that. In fact, we cannot even officially meet with the electrical utilities until two things happen. One, we have a rezoning, which allows our use, and number two, the town gives up its franchise rights to electrical service on our property. You are our electrical provider right now, so if we did not develop this as data center and we went to residential, we'd be dealing with town power and light for our electrical needs. This is kind of a working drawing that we used when we were with the planning commission. The planning commission asked us to get into the weeds and show what the different views would look like from East Chandler and around the National Cemetery. We cut 10 cross-sections so we could come up with views from different perspectives, and again, this shows some of the distances to different points from existing homes at Mountain Brook and different places at the National Cemetery to our buildings. The blue buildings, as Andrew mentioned, are shorter. They're 45 feet maximum height. The yellow buildings are 65 feet maximum height. The M2 zoning ordinance allows buildings up to 70 feet in heights. We're below that for all of our buildings. 1,000 feet is sometimes hard to visualize. I even have sometimes a little bit of a hard time picturing what that is. So for me, I went over to Walmart and Dominion Square Shopping Center, looked at Google Earth, and that's about, if you stand at five below and you kind of look past zeros to Walmart, that's about 1,000 feet. This is what 1,000 feet looks like. This is a Google Earth image. This is not my image, but this is what it looks like to be 1,000 feet away from something. So focusing a bit on our neighbor, our closest neighbor and truly our most important neighbor, the National Cemetery, we have two view corridors that we have to deal with. There's one on our common east property line, shown by the arrow that goes horizontally, and that's about 240 feet wide piece of ground that we're going to put some buffering between the cemetery and our property. And then on the south side, it's about 700 feet of frontage that we have with the National Cemetery. The yellow highlighted area is where the National Cemetery has their maintenance building, they've got a two-story maintenance barn, and then they have a vegetated buffer behind which they have their kind of service yard, their back of house. So if you're in the National Cemetery trying to look east in our direction, you cannot see through to our site. It's totally screened. So this is a view at the National Cemetery from the, what we call Flagpole Circle. This is where the POW flag is. This is looking east towards our site. This is an important location. It's the highest vertical elevation in the new section of the National Cemetery. So we're going to provide some buffers to screen our buildings, which are 900 to 1,000 feet away, and this is what our architect has rendered for what we think the buffer will look like. If you walk down the hill a little bit from the POW flagpole, this is our common property line. These are the closest burial plots planned or existing to our property. Chain link fence is our property line. This one tree is on the National Cemetery side. The ground slopes down. The tree line there is an existing tree line where there's a stream. We'll probably remove most of that to do our stormwater management, but we'll still be putting a buffer in between the cemetery and us, and this is what the rendered view of that would look like. On our south side, this, just to the left, if you've been out to cemetery, is the new columbaria area. This is looking south where our electrical substations would be. Again, the chain link fence is our common property line. There's some existing vegetation along this common property line, which we're planning to leave in place, but again, we will put another buffer to our electrical substation equipment, which is about 250 feet away at its closest point, and this would be the view looking in that direction. Again, we talked about the residential, the potential for what the residential would look like, so if you were looking to the east, this is potentially a view of what it would look like with single-family homes. This is over at High Point. This is in one of the new sections at High Point. These are actually bigger houses than what could be put in by the current site plan, and this is the view that we're proposing. Looking to the south, there would be potentially townhouses there, and as Andrew pointed out, we're allowed to go up to three stories, so these could be 42 feet tall, and then this is an example, again, this is from High Point in town, and this is what we're proposing that to look like. So our next focus point is our neighbors at Mountain Brook. This is an aerial view of Mountain Brook, the intersection of Kingsbrook Drive, Kingsbrook Road, which is the main entrance into Mountain Brook, and East Chandler is a high point. The road slopes down as you go away from East Chandler, and you will note on the houses on the left-hand side, there's already an existing vegetated buffer on that side of those homes. So again, looking at our cross-sections that we worked on for the planning commission, closest house, first house in Mountain Brook's about 450 feet away. It's closest to Buildings 5 and 6, which are 45 feet tall maximum. This is the view today, and this is the view when we put in our landscape buffer. The last priority topic was noise issues. The noise issues... The noise issues, we've done several things on the site plan to try and compensate for the noise issues and minimize our impacts. One is that we've put our data center buildings long axis in an east-west direction, and we've shown potential emergency generator yards on the south sides of these buildings. We don't know yet where our emergency generator yards will be located. Some data centers put them inside the building. We don't know yet because we haven't got to the design portion of those buildings yet. But to be conservative and to kind of show worst case, we've put them on the south side. And worst case, if we do have them exterior, you're going to have either a forty-five-foot-tall or sixty-foot-tall building between the generators and our neighbors. We're screening all our rooftop mechanical equipment, and when you do the screening, we can also add sound dampening materials to the screening. We've been working with probably the North American leading engineering company that specializes in sound control for data centers. And before we agreed to the sound limits that you'll see in a minute, we asked them, can we meet these? And, you know, technically, can we meet them? And economically, can we meet them? And they assured us, yes, we can do this, agree to those noise standards. And the last thing, as Andrew mentioned, is we'll provide a comprehensive noise analysis when we do our first engineered building. Right now, we cannot do a noise analysis for you because we don't know what equipment we have. Data center buildings make noise in one of several ways, emergency generators, but it's primarily how you handle the cooling of the buildings, whether it's water-cooled, air-cooled, fluid-cooled. We don't know yet. Once we do, then we will design it and we'll meet our suggested noise standards. But right now, I cannot tell you how we're designing that. These are the noise standards that we're proffering to and living with. During the daytime hours, our maximum will be sixty dB-A. That's about the level of how I'm talking to you right now, is about sixty dB-A. At night, it drops down to fifty-five. We looked at other counties in our area, and we're giving you the best and lowest noise levels. The county, just across McDevitt, their noise standards are seventy-five and sixty-five. And for every ten dB delta, the noise level, as we perceive it, doubles. So going from sixty to seventy-five is a pretty dramatic increase. This is a graphic chart that kind of tells you what different sound levels sound like. Again, during the day, we're at sixty, which is a normal conversation level. And the dB levels will be measured at our property lines. So that is the standard that we have to meet. So if we're standing on that, by that fence at the National Cemetery, we cannot be any louder than how I'm talking to you now. As Andrew mentioned, we've committed to architectural standards. Older data centers were just plain concrete boxes. It's not appropriate anymore. So we've self-imposed these architectural standards because we want this to be a campus that we're proud of and the town's proud of. When we combine this with our extensive landscaping, we think we're going to have a very, very nice campus. And as Andrew pointed out, we're going to be installing all of our perimeter landscape buffers in our first phase of the project, which will allow those to, besides allowing the landscaping to mature, day one, when we finish Phase One, our whole campus perimeter was established. And the future work will be inside of that envelope, and all you will see is buildings rising up from that. We won't have to do any other perimeter work. All the heavy lifting is done in Phase One. So the conceptual zoning development plan does document some very specific setbacks. And as Andrew pointed out, and as Mr. Brown indicated, we cannot change our building layouts unless we come back first to staff or to you, if it's something dramatic. So what you're seeing on our site plan is what you should expect. You will get, we've also specified our height limits, our setback limits, and our buffering limits. So we're trying to give you at this point in time the most specific information and most specificity that we can at this point with what we know. Andrew pointed out the cash buffers. Good summary there, nothing to add. And just as a visual, this is the situation with the National Cemetery. The yellow area is the area that they've acquired for expansion, and our little finger of land wraps around them. And we're very happy to give them an easement to connect the two properties. Their maintenance building, as you can see, is on the east side of their property. The maintenance folks won't have to go back out on East Chandler to get around to the other property. And then if the National Cemetery wants to connect the two properties, you know, we're happy to help them with that. So in conclusion, it's been a six-month process from starting with staff, working with Planning Commission. We truly feel we've been receptive and open to working with people. We've had good engagement with Planning Commission. We, you know, thank, we had some meetings with the business community and with some veterans. So we thank Culpeper Renaissance and Mr. Short and Commander Medley at the American Legion for setting those up for us. We thought they were positive and productive meetings, and we think our site plan is better for it, for getting the input from the community. So appreciate your attention. Happy to answer any questions. Mr. Truppo, who's our, who's the owner and managing member of the property, is here also if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Any comments about cooling? I'm not sure I really understood. There's a decision yet on whether it's going to be air, water, or fluid, or?
No, we have not done that yet. Part of it depends on the end user. Different users have different preferences. So for example, Amazon Web Services, AWS, they are typically air-cooled folks, although they're now trying to move into liquid-cooled. For their emergency generators, they prefer them to be external. But we have on our team a group that builds data centers across the country, and it varies. It varies by the end user. So we don't know at this point. We think it's likely going to be air-cooled, but the air-cooled technology, the noise mitigation is really improved over the last.
Right. Anyway, I just called my attention because on the proffer, specifically number thirty, proffer number thirty has a comment there about what the proffer has to do with water and sewer for cooling specifically. It's written in there.
So for water and sewer, for water cooling, we're only talking about a nominal amount. If we have any equipment that needs water, it's basically filling it up once and maybe topping it off, but it's a nominal use. And the proffer goes on to say that if it's any kind of significant use, we have to get prior written approval from the town director of public utilities.
Right. Is there consideration, if you want to do water, to use gray water? As opposed to?
It's possible, but again, it hasn't been decided yet.
Okay.
But again, the trend is away from heavy use of water for a number of reasons. There's issues with Legionnaires' disease, it's noisier, it's more energy consumptive, the cooling towers take up a lot more space. So it's kind of a dated technology to use heavy water cooling systems.
All right, thank you. One more. So is there going to be a significant amount of grading, I would imagine, you know, those buildings in there? Has there been any geological surveys done to see how much rock?
Yes.
Is underneath there?
Yes. So prior to us coming to you about data center, you know, we bought the property for residential. And before we buy any property, we'd go through an extensive due diligence process where we look at all the site attributes. We look at the grading. We look at soils. We've done soils investigation. We've done soil borings over the property. We look at where the existing wetlands are. We already have our Corps of Engineers-approved delineation. We look for threatened endangered species. We look for potential historic resources. We investigate all that stuff before we even buy the property because we want to make sure we don't have any surprises. So yes, we know our soils out here. We know where there's rock. There is some rock. But we're trying to engineer the site that we minimize the need for any rock blasting for a couple of reasons.
Yeah, that's where I'm getting at.
It's very expensive. We like to stay away from it. Our initial studies have shown it's mostly in the southeast corner of our site. But when we did our preliminary grading for the Planning Commission to come up with all our different cross-sections, we evaluated that, and we're mostly putting fill in that part of the site so we don't have to go down. The middle of the site, we are going down. If you've been out there, it's a hilly site. Data centers want to be flat. So basically, we're making a flat plane in the middle of the site. We're pushing it down, and we'll be cutting in the middle, filling on the south side, and doing some filling where the substation is. But we've looked at it, we've evaluated it, we tried to make the earthwork balance also, which is also an important cost consideration. Also, it's a consideration that you don't want to have a lot of trucks hauling dirt off the site. We want to stay on the site, grade it, balance it. And the last thing I would say is, we're doing all that work in Phase One. So when we do Phase One, we put in one of the substations, two buildings, but we mass grade the site. And where the future buildings are, they're just level fields. And then the future phases, all we do is work in those areas, and we don't have to do any mass grading. Because it's a concern. I mean, it's, it will be a big earthwork job, but we'll get it done in Phase One, and then that's it. No future blasting, no heavy earthwork. It's just building construction after that.
Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Who want to be first?
Just to let everybody know, before you come up to speak, I've been given a time clock since there are several people here, so I'm going to try to hold people to their dreams.
Where is the clock?
That's right, right here. But it has some lights up here, so when you see the yellow, that means you're kind of getting close, I guess.
Okay. Thank you. I'm Dr. John Liver. I live in Gainesville, Virginia, and I am retired from NASA as a modeler from NASA for spaceflight missions. I'm retired Navy and a member of the American Legion post. My PhD is in computational science. So I have been modeling for about the last two years. The data center's in Prince William County. I see, the presentation you just saw was very slickly done, and it's following the same problems that we are getting in Prince William County. I've been working with the Board of Supervisors up there. The, for example, the viewshed analysis showed all these beautiful trees. Remember, that's after forty years of growth. So for thirty years, you're going to see those things. They're putting, building number three is a higher elevation than the cemetery. The pictures just showed it as below. So what I want to talk to you about basically is noise. Let me start the first one. The speaker talked about his noise level being about fifty, about sixty decibels. I recorded it was fifty. So it's ten times louder than what he was trying to get you to believe. The noise levels, I have modeled it. I have done nominal readings off of many data centers that currently exist of varying types in Prince William County and Loudoun County, and I have modeled it. And I have produced a chloropleth math of the noise levels that are predicted in my model. My model has been validated. The noise levels at the National Cemetery will be between sixty-six and seventy decibels. At here, right outside this building, you're going to have about sixty-three. At Mountain Brook Estate, it will be seventy-one decibels. That's using the nominal data centers currently being built in Loudoun and Prince William Counties. So the question is, how are you going to enforce this noise ordinance? Does your police department have registered acoustic technicians? Do you have the equipment to measure acoustic stuff? This is an infrastructure cost. The infrastructure costs, I haven't heard any mention, looking through all the paperwork on this application, no infrastructure costs have been taken into account. There's a lot of heavy machinery and construction materials and these dirt-moving and blasting and whatnot that will go on up East Chandler. That road is not going to handle it. I'm sorry. I did a lot of this work with the superintendent of the Manassas National Battlefield Park. They are going to have to rebuild roads in the park. Prince William County, by the way, for one development called the Prince William Digital Gateway, will incur one-point-one billion, that's with a B, dollars in infrastructure costs. I haven't seen your Planning Commission, or your planning reports, or your previous speaker, talk anything about those costs or the wear and tear on the roads. Did we go to yellow already? All right, well, let me just close then, very quick. I didn't see it go to yellow, I'm sorry. All right, so you're going to get a few tax dollars out of this, only about a hundred-and-fifty jobs out of this whole project at the full completion. You're going to lower the living standards. The historic district is going to have noise in the mid-sixties range. And for what? I say, look at all the information. Think about this. I recommend denial, or at least deferral of this application at this time. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the extra time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council people. My name is Jeffrey Lefler. I am a resident of the Mountain Brook Estates Development, right where this thing is going to be going, or possibly. I have a lot of concerns. Had a nice conversation with Janie Smith yesterday. Appreciate her calling me. I have spoken before the Planning Commission too. And just to reiterate one thing, the Planning Commission couldn't really come back with an approval on this project. So, but my concerns are with the development itself and our development, our housing development is like it told Janie, traffic. Right now, we did a, we had a traffic survey done, and I look back, it was actually done in October of last year. Jim Hoy, along with the police department, helped us do it. And right now, through our development, on a one-week basis, we had twenty-two-hundred cars come through that development. So looking at this, not only will, I'm sure there'll increase traffic just for people coming through there, but construction, equipment, things like that, workers coming through our development to get to the site. So that's one of our concerns. Of course, the noise is a major factor. Mountain Brook Estates has the generators on the one side. We have Bingham Taylor that we hear, you know, continuously, and now, from what I gather, they're going to be operating twenty-four hours a day. So adding this, that'll be three sides of noise-producing equipment that will affect our development there. Also, like I say, the noise, of course, the concerns of the cemetery. My parents are both buried there. So, you know, these are things that are really factors that concern me and, of course, other residents of the development with this going on. So also, one of the neighbors in the development who lives close to the generators, they went to the town, I don't know exactly who it was, but they complained about the noise. And the bottom line, they were told, is that they were there first. So with this going on, I'd just like to say that our development was there first. So I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
I'll be brief. My name is Margaret Hunt. I live at eight-four-six Kingsbrook Road, which means I'm one of the two houses at the intersection of East Chandler and Kingsbrook Road. And I'm seriously concerned about the noise issue. Now, it's a quiet, pleasant neighborhood in my area. I have a sister who has just moved in with me, who has multiple sclerosis and suffers from severe migraines. My bedroom faces East Chandler, so the decibels they're talking about are likely to have continuous, ongoing noise throughout the day and at night when I'm trying to sleep. I'm also concerned. I'm also concerned about the power lines, the electricity infrastructure. I looked in the, worked in the electricity field for Edison Electric Institute in Washington for 25 years and worked on these issues. And I know that there are some issues there that are to be concerned about, particularly as you talk about building out any power lines along East Chandler that run outside my bedroom. I wasn't worried about it when I moved in, but as you think about building that up, and I guess the saddest thing to me is, it's, our residential neighborhood is one of those that you can walk to downtown from, which I think is a lovely feature. And I had hoped that those townhouses would be developed, the residential development would become, come along, and it would be a really good neighborhood to live in with easy access for walking to downtown rather than building it out on the other side of James Madison Highway in that direction. And I appreciate the importance of data centers. I just wanted to voice my opinion and I feel like, you know, I'm right at that cross-section that's gonna get the maximum impact. And I don't want to have to move because of that and I fear that ultimately I might have to and I'm not sure what that does to the property value of my house in trying to sell it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Hi, Chuck Laudner from West Moreland County. I represent the American Battlefield Trust. Battlefield Trust preserves battlefield land, Revolutionary War, War of 1812, and Civil War, but more for tonight's purposes. I head up the Friends of Culpeper Battlefields, which is the lead organization working with Virginia to open the new state park, Culpeper Battlefield State Park next year, which has an obvious direct tie-in with the National Cemetery. I know others are gonna talk about the history of Eastern View, but I'd like to just reserve my comments to the National Cemetery. I want to start with the National Cemeteries Act in 1867. And that specified the design, the permanent construction of the lodges, the marble headstones. And it is the design of each of these national cemeteries that it would include these defining features that convey both its, their words, "protected atmosphere in significance as a historic landscape." Significance as a historic landscape. And many of these features are still reflected in Culpeper National Cemetery, those original design intents. And so over the next decades after the start of Culpeper National Cemetery, it was the U.S. Army design, construction, the reinterment of the dead from the battlefields here in Culpeper County. Yeoman effort, I mean, this is an incredible effort over 20 years to do everything that they accomplished in those 20 years in the permanent headstones. And it was that commitment, not just of an act of Congress, but on behalf of the American people, the people of Culpeper County, ensuring that the remains of an estimated nationwide 300,000 Union soldiers were buried with dignity and perpetual honor in a national cemetery. Now, it's not just one-off. As part of the Friends Group of the state park, all of our associated historical, environmental groups, the cemetery is part of that, just as the museum would be, just as the battlefields themselves. And we often do send folks to the National Cemetery because, obviously, the cemetery itself, but those state markers that are there, those state markers that are there, they become also part of our countywide historical tour for our Battlefield State Park. So all I would leave you with is that, obviously, on the docket tonight is data center, yes or no, what we do for that industry. But all of the discussion for weeks has been, the number one, two, and three concern has been what it does to the National Cemetery. And I just wish that the conversation that has been up to this point, but moving forward is what are we gonna do for the National Cemetery? And that's for everybody, moving forward, to keep an eye on how we make that, keep that an extra special and hallowed ground. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Town Board. My name is Jim Bish. I reside at 541 Terracourt in Culpeper. And a little bit about me, I'm a historian, history educator for 40 years, and I'm also on the board of the Culpeper Museum. Mr. Short, I know that you mentioned earlier tonight about the Constitution and the anniversary of that coming up. And I want to make everybody aware that 250 years ago, next year, 2024, we will have the celebration of the Culpeper Resolves just two blocks up the street. What happened with that resolves is that men from Culpeper County went off to fight in the revolution to give us the country that we have. One of those men was Thomas Freeman. Thomas Freeman lived at Eastern View at that point. He was young, he marched off to war. He joined the Third, Third Virginia. He was in the Battle of Brandywine, Germantown. He was in a number of battles that the Third Virginia were in. The Battle of Germantown, he was wounded. He spent almost 10 months in a, in, being wounded, almost 10 months in a English prison in New York before he was exchanged. He came back to Eastern View. He was the second generation to come back there, raised a family there. They were the third generation to be there. And then eventually, there were four generations of Freeman family members there. My biggest problem is with historical resources that were given you, that I witnessed in the documents that you have. There's a lot of historic resources on that Eastern View area. I've studied cemeteries and colonial history in Virginia for 40 years. There's at least three generations of Freeman family members that are buried on that land. I don't know where they're buried. I have a good idea, but they're there, just like George Washington's Mount Vernon. That's how people buried themselves in colonial Virginia. They didn't have community, public cemeteries. They buried them on their own properties. And the Freeman families, three generations are buried there. So there's a lot of historic resources on that property. After the Civil War, and I know there's some others that will talk about that, but Eastern View Academy was there. There's also newspaper evidence that there was an earlier, one of the first earliest schools in Culpeper County was situated there before Eastern View Academy. Eastern View Academy was one of the primary educators of the leaders of Culpeper County. Those resources are there, the foundations are there. They need to be examined on that piece of property before they go, just to tear off the top of that hill, which, by the way, if you've ever been up there, is one of the most pleasant views you'll ever see in Culpeper County. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that historic resources are there and they just haven't been examined. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Dan Holmes. I live at, on East Piedmont Street, right here in town. I don't know how many "I don't knows" I heard during that presentation. I heard a lot of, we haven't decided that yet as well. And that all leads me to believe that this is a speculative development project. You're not negotiating with our new neighbors. You're negotiating with somebody that wants you to upzone a property, increase their profitability and marketability of their property. But whoever we're dealing with, at the end of the day, whoever buys this property or partners with them, will answer these questions. And they're gonna be limited by the properties you're considering here tonight. And I just want to say, you know, we're not, if we're not negotiating with the actual tenants or the people that will be operating these buildings, then I have a lot of concerns about the way the properties are currently drafted. Number one, the noise issue, that's constant. That doesn't stop. That is a constant noise that you're gonna hear, whether you're in a cemetery or a home. It's gonna have an impact on the town. You're gonna have an impact on the eastern gateway to our town. You're gonna have an impact on tourism. You know, one of the things that brought me to this town 20 years ago, when I decided to buy a century home and restore it to raise a family, was this still had the feeling of a small town. Still had the feeling of community. And I feel like a lot of, lots been made of the revenue that these projects bring. At the end of the day, how much is too much? How much just represents greed? You know, at some point, I understand this thing will allow tax revenue that allows us to buy a lot of nice stuff for the residents of the town. I think we just approved one, 600-megawatt one. This is probably gonna be 600 megawatts, too. Amazon HQ Cloud is 500 megawatts. That is almost the entire output of the North Anna Nuclear Power Plant, which currently generates 1,799 megawatts of power. That is a tremendous amount of power. And the infrastructure that comes with this, you're approving that, too. You can't divorce yourself from this decision on this property and what it means with regard to 230 KB lines coming into these properties. Now, I don't know if we've looked at other counties and what they're actually getting out of their properties, but maybe we should. Maybe we should look at some of these counties that are currently negotiating, like Falk here. I've heard that one of their data center proposals, the applicants actually considering proffering burying the transmission line. That sounds like a nice thing. I'd like to see that if we're gonna approve something else. At the end of the day, there is a, this represents a cluster of data centers that I think far surpasses some of the sites we see out in Loudoun. 1,700 megawatts, all right next to each other.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the town council. My name is Clark B. Hall and I have the privilege of being a resident of the town of Culpeper. I have the privilege of being founding board member of the Chantilly Battlefield Association, which was destroyed by development. The Brandy Station Foundation, founding board member of that, a battlefield which was not destroyed by development, although well-intentioned by developers and the Board of Supervisors to do so. I'm also a founding board member of the American Battlefield Trust. I have written and researched the Battle of Brandy Station, the Battle of Cedar Mountain, Civil War in Culpeper County for more than three decades. And it is my contention, never disputed by any historian or reputable authority except developers, except developers. It is my absolute belief that Culpeper County was the most fought over, marched upon, camped upon county in the entire Civil War. From March 1862 to May of 1864, this was Katy bar the door in Culpeper County as far as the Civil War is concerned. More battles were fought here from '62 to '64. More campaigns, military campaigns were opened and closed here than any other county in this country. More casualties occurred in this county than any other county in this country, and many of them are buried in your and my Culpeper County, Culpeper National Cemetery. Second thing, important. Although the developer disputes this piece of property as a cow pasture, how do you like that? A cow pasture? A cow pasture? The Gettysburg Campaign, the most significant military campaign in American military history, the largest and most threshold military event in American history, was planned on that hill. A cow pasture was planned on a knoll up on Eastern View Hill. A hill that looks directly, mind you, down into the National Cemetery. Go up there, go up there and look down. You're looking at tombstones, at tombstones in Culpeper's National Cemetery. Third thing, third thing. There is one piece of terrain in Culpeper County, one piece of terrain that retains its integrity, 100% integrity to the Civil War, 100%. That's Eastern View Hill. What a perfect place, what a perfect place to preserve that hill, just exactly the way it is now, just to preserve it. Open, you can look at Fleetwood Hill on your left, Stevensburg on your, on your front, to your east, and Cedar Mountain on your right, Pony Mountain in between. You can look there and interpret the entire Civil War experience in Culpeper County. You can do that from that hill. You can do that from that hill. Here's an opportunity for the town to save its most important and most pristine and most intact Civil War resource in the entire, in the town of Culpeper. That's Eastern View Hill. And thank you for your attention. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Next?
Larry Green of Reva, Virginia. I've sat here and listened to several very valid concerns. Noise being one of them. I did some research before I came here tonight and I went out to the data center. Only thing I could hear was the birds and the traffic going down 29. We talked about the buffers, that land is already approved for 400-some houses. Those houses will be more detrimental to the National Cemetery than this will be. They will be right up against it with whatever the legal limits are. The thing you're not thinking about is, houses cost the county and town money. Rescue, fire, sewer, water. A prediction by Tom Underwood, the data center that's going into county right now, will be an income of $8 million a year. So would you rather have houses that are gonna cost you money or clean industry that's gonna make you money? I understand and I do respect the historic value of the place. As a lot of you know, my family's been here over 200 years. I can tell you all some stories. But let's face it, there's not a place in this county that it's a Confederate shoulder to spend the night or a hospital was. My family's farm is one of them. I know this board is very reasonable and you're gonna make the right decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening and thank you for letting me speak to you. I'm Lori Medley, also known as the Commander of the American Legion. Initially, we did attend both of the-
Excuse me, ma'am. Your address?
I'm in Culpeper County in Northridge.
All right, thank you.
We did, I did attend both planning commission meetings and I want to compliment the planning commission and the applicants on how much work they did to respect the setting of the cemetery. However, the two major remaining concerns seem to be beyond their control. And that is the noise by the generators. And they talk about the generators will only run, excuse me, during emergency situations. But when we have a hot week like we had a week and a half ago, I suspect that the generators are gonna be running to keep up with the load, that they're gonna need to keep those data centers cool. So we have to consider that. That is beyond their control, but it is something that the town needs to consider. And then the other issue that's come up is the transmission lines that are gonna have to come into the county, the right-of-ways. And that's just a new thing that the Board of Supervisors just heard about last week, so that's a major concern as well. So I moved down here almost seven years ago from Loudoun County. I recently went back to my old neighborhood and I had trouble finding it. Data centers seem to be a little bit like rabbits. And you build one, they just multiply like crazy. So that's another major concern. We've already approved a large section of data centers for the community, for the town. And I think it would be prudent to wait until those are developed so that we understand the issues of these major-scale data centers. This is not like Swift or the Equinox that are small, one-off, that've been there, we know them. This is a totally different animal that requires its own 10-acre substation. So I ask that you consider all those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Close public, oh, one more? Come on down.
I've already, Carrie Roemsberg, Livingston County, and I've already expressed my opinion as a veteran and a member of the VFW Honor Guard about the cemetery. Now I'll express my opinion about the proposal. As most of my thirty-nine-year federal career, I was a federal contracting officer, and there are just too many unknowns in this proposal to be acceptable. The only thing that seems clear is the proffers. In government contracts, you don't have that. It's fixed braces, it's fixed plus incentives. This seems kind of open-ended as a proposal. My question is, what is the exact benefit to the citizens of Culpeper, other than the proffer? Is there any benefit at all? We've already heard about the downside to the cemetery because of the significance of the history of that cemetery. And there's not a whole lot I can say other than that. It is very important to preserve the sanctity of that cemetery over all else, and there's just too many open-ended questions. One of my contracts, as when I was active, was Arlington National Cemetery. So I'm very aware of cemeteries and how Arlington National Cemetery has been protected over generations and hopefully for generations to come. They have torn down significant places like the Navy Annex to make room for Arlington Cemetery. But there's not much room left around Culpeper to do that. So, that's all I can say, as I say, as a veteran, a former contracting officer, and a member of the Honor Guard, please don't accept this without more detail.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sarah Parmally, Piedmont Environmental Council. In December of 2022, the council was advised-
Excuse me, ma'am, your address?
I am a Culpeper County resident. In December of 2022, the council was advised to adopt an incentive for an industry that the town zoning was not and is not equipped to deal with. This incentive brought data centers to Culpeper before the town even had the phrase "data center" in their code of ordinances. This puts the council in a position where you have very little information, negotiability, or protections when dealing with an incredibly powerful industry with many known and documented impacts. If the town had used specific zoning language for data centers, it could require studies that would help the council better understand the pros and cons of each application and therefore make an informed decision. Instead, the council is being asked to make a significant decision without even having a proper economic study to help justify the negative impacts that this project is likely to have. It also potentially sets a precedent that data centers are a "by right use" in M2 zoning, the ramifications for which have not been fully considered. The town could also require a use permit, which could add additional layers of protection and give you the opportunity to negotiate for mitigation measures and funds. Instead, this is a straight rezoning, and the approval of Copper Ridge also approves all other heavy industrial uses adjacent to an important cultural resource and people's homes. You are also leaving significant mitigation funds on the table. One example, Prince William receives sixty-six cents per square foot for their fire and rescue. That is twice what you have been offered, and that money would go a lot farther in our volunteer-based system. Before you make your decision on Copper Ridge, please consider the information, the protections, and the money you are leaving and have already left on the table by not having the right language in your ordinance before adopting this technology zone incentive. I would like to also address the applicant's claims that Dominion will not speak to them regarding the future right-ofway. I spoke to Dominion reps on Friday, and they can absolutely discuss possible right-of-ways with potential clients before there is a load agreement in place, especially when serving that client means a new transmission line, as Copper Ridge will. I'd be happy to share my email correspondence with Dominion, with anyone who would be interested. Dominion could also speak to the Town Council if they were asked. But this information has been available for the applicant to acquire, and it appears that they have chosen not to. Finally, with an application that is so speculative, the council is not even dealing with the builder, let alone the end user, and with no use-specific language in the town zoning to give the council negotiability or use-specific standards, the only thing we can rely on is what is written down in the proffers, and there is a lot that is simply not there. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you this evening, you do have this public hearing. There is not a recommendation, but council does have the options now that you have conducted the public hearing, and upon consideration of the documents submitted by the applicant, the purpose of the zoning ordinance, the conformity with the comprehensive plan, and the comments provided by the public, council may either approve the rezoning on tax parcels forty-one dash one oh three and forty-one dash one oh four to Industrial District M2 with proffers put forward by the property owner, or they may, you may deny the rezoning on tax parcels forty-one dash one oh three and forty-one dash one oh four to Industrial District M2. Be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Andrew, just, I know you've explained this before, and I'm sorry for asking again, but if we do not approve the zoning request this evening, what is the next step that the applicant might pursue?
The existing R2 zoning would remain in effect with the proffers from that prior zoning, which included that conceptual development plan that had the four hundred and ninety-eight restricted units, so they would be free to develop the property in that manner with no public input, it would be a "by right" development at that stage.
Okay. All right, so they either build, either fall back and build to that original plan or perhaps sell to another developer who would also build to that original plan?
Correct. Essentially, if this rezoning is denied, that is the plan that is on the books, and that is essentially what is entitled to be built on that property. And there are, essentially, they are locked into that through the proffers as well, so there's not the variability to essentially reduce that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anyone else for Andrew? Thank you, Andrew. Motion to approve the recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the rezoning of tax parcels forty-one dash one oh three and forty-one dash one oh four to Industrial District M2.
Second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor.
Conversation, any discussion?
I'd like to thank everyone who is here this evening. This is a, this is an important topic. It's not simply a piece of construction, this has to do with our town, and for a Wiza veteran in close proximity to our beloved National Cemetery, it also could potentially impact that. And I know the staff has spent months and months digging into all these details. What you're seeing here this evening is probably not a lot of questions from council, but that's because we've been asking the hard questions and doing the research on our own for the last several months as well. And for those that are here this evening, for those that agreed to meet for coffee and talk through the details for all the cards and letters I know all of us received, we just appreciate that input greatly. And it is something that we pay a lot of attention to, so I wanted to thank you guys for that. I think that this, you know, it's been said that council will approve this simply for the money aspect, and as we look at our town, this council, councils that have come before us have begun working hard to get to a position where we're debt-free, so that Wiza Town can operate from a position of strength in the future. And we're looking at this type of data center solution to be able to provide not that short-term budget fix, but that long-term fix. Wiza Town Council have responsibility, not just to make sure that we are safe today, but that we have a long-term plan to remain safe. And one of the things I appreciate about this solution that this team has brought here is that it can be that puzzle piece that fits in, that helps us to do that, helps us to have that long-term plan. We have spent a lot of time meeting with the Director of Culpeper National Cemetery, greatly respect her, she's a guardian not just of the real estate, but also the heroes that are buried there. And her feedback has been that neither her nor her national organization feel that there's, this building design, as we see here this evening, will be a hindrance either to the operation or to future activities there at the National Cemetery. And again, for those of us here in the room that are veterans, that's important. My wife and I are both going to end up there, and I want to make sure that we don't do anything to disturb that. But I think for this reason and others, I'd be, I'll be happy to vote to approve the rezoning this evening. But again, for those of you who are here, thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown.
Abstain.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Klanga.
Aye.
Mayor Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Remickus.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Short.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Yowz absent.
All right. Nine point oh three, A1 RR reference resolution commending the Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission on its fiftieth anniversary. Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, another long evening already, and so I ask your patience in this, we are wishing to celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of the Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission, and so I'll ask that you bear with me as I read a resolution that we're asking for the council to adopt this evening. So this is a resolution commending the Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission on its fiftieth anniversary. Whereas in nineteen sixty-six, the General Assembly created the Metropolitan Area Study Commission, also known as the HAN Commission, which found that a holistic approach to solving local and regional problems needed to be taken. The commission recommended a new concept, the creation of planning district commissions and service district commissions. And whereas the Virginia Area Development Act passed in nineteen sixty-eight created the planning district commission framework to encourage and facilitate local government cooperation and state-local cooperation in addressing on a regional basis problems of greater than local significance. And whereas, on January sixteenth, nineteen seventy-three, the Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission held its first meeting at the Culpeper Town Hall with charter members from Falkir County, Orange County, Rappahannock County, and the town of Warrenton attending. And whereas, the Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission is now led by members representing the counties of Culpeper, Falkir, Madison, Orange, and Rappahannock, and the towns of Culpeper, Gordonsville, Madison, Orange, Remington, The Plains, Warrenton, and Washington. And whereas, the RRRC has provided professional planning and technical resources, a concerted approach to regional cooperation, planning assistance with program delivery, and a forum for the interaction of appointed and elected officials and citizen members of the region, and serves as a liaison between local and state governments partnering with the Commonwealth to carry out state initiatives at the local and regional level. And whereas, the RRRC and its partners have worked on numerous projects impacting the Rappahannock Rapidan region in the areas of agricultural development, environmental planning, transportation planning and coordination, regional tourism, criminal justice planning, housing development, and homeless services, hazard mitigation planning, and regional growth issues. And whereas, the RRRC takes great pride in the value that its work has brought to the Rappahannock Rapidan region over the past fifty years, and recognizes the importance of regional collaboration in addressing challenges in the future, now therefore be it resolved that the council of the town of Culpeper, Virginia, does hereby commend, recognize, and appreciate the Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission for its fifty years of significant contributions made to the town and its citizens. Further, the Town Council extends warm wishes to RRRC for many more vibrant years to come. So we do ask that council adopt that resolution.
Thank you, Andrew. Motion to approve the recommendation.
I move the resolution.
Second it.
Any discussion?
I would just like to say for anybody who isn't aware, Mr. Hyvly is a member of the Regional Commission as well as myself.
Thank you, congratulations to both of you. All right, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Klanga.
Aye.
Mayor Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Remickus.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Short.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Yowz absent.
All right. Ten oh one point oh one, manager's monthly report, any questions?
Nine point oh three, we've got one more.
Oh, that's right, what's wrong with me? Nine point oh three, A1 RR reference town initiated zoning orders amended to the Park and Overlay District. Andrew.
I move the recommendation. Second it.
Any discussions? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Klanga.
Aye.
Mayor Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Remickus.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Short.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Yowz absent.
All right. Now, any questions on the manager's report, monthly report? None? All right. Ten point oh two, submission of FY twenty-three annual report, any questions or comments? No? Do anyone have anything else? If not-
Mr. Mayor, just real quickly, I think she's already left, but I just wanted to publicly thank Ms. Nancy Rice, she's coordinated this constitutional proclamation for us, she's coordinated events out of Yale Middle Park for that week, and it's just, I just really appreciate that.
Thank her for me, too.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else have anything else? If not?
One more.
We are adjourned.